All right, welcome everybody to the February 28th meeting of the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission meeting. I appreciate everybody being here, it looks like a good crowd tonight. I'm glad you all decided to engage in the city approval process. We want to start with our minutes of the meeting from our January meeting. If I can have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second, in discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is a moment if you want to comment on things that are not on tonight's agenda. We give you the opportunity to come forward tonight at this point and speak to the commission for items, again, not on tonight's agenda. Anybody want to do that tonight? All right, I see none, then we'll move on to announcements. Catherine?
I have no announcements, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Could we say, remember about the meeting on Monday?
We can.
Yes, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you for reminding me. We will have a joint conceptual workshop Monday evening, March 4th, at 4 o'clock to discuss the Carruthers-McEwen Integrated Road Plan.
Okay.
And that's going to be a really important meeting for everybody to be able to participate in. It really deals with the future of that corridor.
Great, all right.
In this room, in this room.
In this room, in the board.
All right, next item, is there anyone who has an item that they want to put on tonight's agenda that's not on tonight's agenda? All right, I see none of that, then we'll move on to our consent agenda. We've got items on our consent that are considered relatively non-controversial that we'll vote on as a group. We've got two consents, initial and secondary. I'll start with the initial consent. That would be items number seven, 12, 13, 14, 15, as a deferral to the March meeting, 16 is a deferral to the March meeting, 17 is approval with revised conditions that you've got on your, at your desk, and 18 would also be deferral to the March meeting. And then item 20 will be the last of the initial consent. Anybody in the audience, staff, or commission want to pull items from that consent agenda? All right, I see none, then we will vote on the consent agenda as provided. Is there a motion?
Move for approval with staff recommendations.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. For our secondary agenda, I'm going to pass the chair to our vice chair and let him address that agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our secondary consent agenda tonight is item number eight. Do I have a motion for approval of item eight?
Move for approval.
A second?
Second.
You have a motion at a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, Roger. All right, we will start with item number nine, which is ordinance 2013-8, to be entitled ordinance to rezone 10.03 acres from agricultural district to estate residential district where the property located at 252 Spencer Creek Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This rezoning request, as you mentioned, relates to two properties off Spencer Creek Road that are currently zoned agricultural. My request is to rezone to estate residential, the ER zoning district. One thing that's helpful with this request, the last page of your packet shows a map, and I've included the hillside overlay on that, and it's also on the screen. As shown on the map, approximately 50 percent of the area within the two parcels is within the HHO, so the hillside, hill crest overlay district, and it restricts development to uses outlined in the zoning order section 3.4.8. While all properties on north side of Spencer Creek Road, as you'll notice, are zoned AG agricultural, if the parcel series is zoned to rezone to ER and are later subdivided, the density would remain compatible with existing lots in the Deerfield and Echo Estates subdivisions, and would remain under one unit per acre as recommended by the land use plan. Therefore, staff fills that a rezoning to estate residential is appropriate, given the constraint of the HHO on the properties and the character of the adjacent areas. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, does anyone in the audience other than applicant would like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant?
I'm Mort Stein, I'm representing the applicant. And the purpose for this is the owners want to subdivide parcel 2104 so that they can have, build another house on it. And it will be approximately two and a half acres, which is within the estate residential zoning district. And we agree with staff's recommendation and staff's comments.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion? Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, move to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number 10, if I can speak. Ordinance 2013-09, to be entitled ordinance to rezone 25.10 acres from general office district to residential variety RX.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, as you had indicated, this is a request to rezone from general office to residential variety in support of a three-story, 228-unit attached development. We have a number of conditions on the rezoning. Primarily, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, favorable recommendation to BOMA. The land use plan does indicate that, more specifically, the southwest corner of Special Area 5 is appropriate for a mixture of uses, including attached and detached, but not until the intersection of South Royal Oaks and Mack Hatcher Parkway is improved. However, we do have funds from a previous development for the improvement of that area. Dan Allen of our engineering department would like to elaborate on that point.
Good evening, commissioners. Just wanted to take a minute here, we have a lot of folks out here that are, be talking a lot, as we expect, about traffic in the area. Just wanted to provide some extra information so that everybody has all the facts that we have and can take into consideration while these are being discussed tonight. Back in 2006, February 23rd, to be specific, a project, an office project was proposed for this site. And as part of the evaluation of that traffic study and that particular plan, it was determined that a $50,000 lump sum payment would be made to the city to be contributed towards specific lane and capacity improvements for the intersection of Royal Oaks and Mack Hatcher. That money was turned over to the city on March 17th, and I have, actually, we were able to find copies of that check, so we can confirm that that is sitting in an escrow account, available to be used on a project out there. In light of reviewing this latest proposal to go from general office to residential variety zoning, staff has looked at that traffic study and determined that, based on the information submitted, the proposed use on this new zoning that's being put into place is less intensive than the previous project that was proposed for general office. Based on that, based on that information, engineering staff has determined that the $50,000 lump sum contribution is more than adequate to offset the impacts from the traffic study that are identified for this development and this rezoning that's being proposed this evening. And that ends my comments until there's further questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to set some rules here. We're trying to do business up here, and it's to your benefit as a community. And we don't, this is not a comedy show, this is not an entertainment show, we don't need laughing, we don't need outbursts, please. We are here to listen to your comments and appreciate that, but we don't need a general ooh, ah's, and o's, and laughs, and that sort of thing. So please, let's be civilized, we appreciate that. Also, as we have public comments, I want to challenge everyone that, to maintain a two-minute limit on your comments. And please, we're pretty intelligent people up here, if somebody's already said something, we understand that, we don't have to have it repeated 10 or 15 times. So keep your comments to things that are new and unique to what we haven't already heard, we'd appreciate that. So I'm going to start with, oh, and also, when you come forward, please state your name and where you live, your address. I'm going to start with, coming over the podium here, please line up for those who want to comment. And again, please, keep your comments to two minutes or less. And there is a timer on the wall, as you can see on these three walls, that'll show you where you are relative to that two minutes.
My name is Mike Skinner, I live at 258 Sontag in Pope Place. I'm also the 3rd ward chairman, alderman of the city of Franklin. I'll be great, because I know there's a number of people who want to speak. We just had, the developers tells us that they've done traffic studies that show that there's less traffic from these apartments than if they build a project with office in it. But you've just heard that that office project has been approved since 2006, and there's one building that's been built, I think, out of that project. But what they're doing is comparing the apartments that'll be built out in two years to the office that will be built out in who knows how many years. Right now, there seems to be a glut of office here, and it's all cyclical, and eventually that'll come back around, but I don't think that those offices will be built out in two years. So what I hope, and we talked about improvements for the traffic, we all know that really the improvement will come when the state widens Mack Hatcher by two more lanes, all the way from south of 96 at least past Lewisburg. So if it takes more time for the office to be built out, there's a chance that the state will make the improvements on Mack Hatcher, and we can actually do something that will make a difference in the traffic pattern, for instance, making a double left turn lane to go south on Mack Hatcher. So I hope you will consider this. I've never had as many responses about our citizens being involved in something as this is. So please vote no for the rezoning and the PUD for Rachel Springs.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, I'm Hank Brockman, I'm a property owner of various properties in downtown Franklin. I live at 1407 Old Hillsboro Road. I'm here to express an opinion in favor of rezoning for Rachel Springs tonight. About five years ago, me and four other investors did a study, hired a number of consultants for the property to use it for commercial use, including Baton &amp; Shaw, which many of you may know. Our observations based on that study were, no secret, the topography is extremely challenging. Two, the front where it's flat was utilized for infrastructure, including a road, which as a result pushes the development to the back of the property where the slope and the topography are much more difficult. As a result, we concluded that the buildings would be extremely expensive. Also, the parking is expensive because it will require multi-story garages. Accessibility and location, we thought for commercial was inappropriate, and felt like there were other locations that were better for that type of project. We concluded the project would not be economically viable, therefore, we concluded, after some other thoughts and studies, and I've bought the land three times, there's a lot of animal and wildlife down in the creek area there, we concluded the best use of the property was for multifamily. We thought that it would require less visibility and that it would create less traffic. We didn't pursue that option, however, because that's not our focus as a business or expertise. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Douglas Buttry. I reside at Forest Crossing, a residential community whose entrance is directly across the street from the property in question here tonight. I moved to my current residence at Forest Crossing on November 17th, 2010, and over the years, my wife had said she always wanted to live in Franklin, she finally got her way, we live here, we live here now. Indeed, Franklin is a lovely little community and is dear to the hearts of those who live here, especially those who were born and raised here, and are watching their hometown struggle to balance the past with the future in a way that does not destroy the history, charm, and natural beauty of the area. While I cannot claim to be, to speak for everyone, I think I can safely say that most of us have come to accept that we will not be able to hold on to all the history, charm, and natural beauty, but many of us are very determined to preserve what we can in an orderly, honorable, and thoughtful way. This effort will require, this effort will require effort, vigilance, and possibly sacrifice. To hearken back to the language of turmoil of earlier times, we are the people. We're sitting in front of you tonight. We're the people who live here, we're the people who work here, we're the people who raise our families here, we're the people who pay taxes here, and we're the people who vote here. And we're here to make sure this community, the administrative leaders, elected leaders, know that we're paying attention, that we care about our community. Many of our friends and neighbors would like to be here tonight to voice their opposition, but for various reasons, they cannot attend. We are here to speak for them. As Forest Crossing board member, HOA board member, I'm charged with the renaissance duty to do everything within my power to protect the interests of our homeowners, which includes protecting their market value of their property and the natural and commercial environment of our community. Our neighborhood is a lovely place with high-value, single-family homes, highly-maintained common areas, and highly-maintained lawns and vegetation. We have a public golf course nestled among the homes, running along the scenic historic river. Unfortunately, we also have busy Mack Hatcher Parkway and busy Royal Oaks Boulevard, part of the subject property, and anyone familiar with the area knows to avoid that intersection. Unfortunately, it is a traffic nightmare already with no end in sight. Investors and developers are always looking for opportunities to turn a profit.
Sir, please wrap up your comments, please, sir.
Pardon me?
Please wrap up your comments.
I'm sorry?
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay. There are probably some homeowners here that'll yield me some time. They do not have, we wish them success, but not when their success comes by depriving existing property owners of the quiet enjoyment of their property. They do not have the right to unmitigated development opportunities that run counter to the pre-existing rights and concerns of adjacent property owners. If this property is ever developed, it is the will of the people that we should go forward under the original zoning or not at all. It is inconceivable to us that our political leaders would approve anything else in the face of such united and unanimous opposition from the adjacent communities. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to appear and express our views and this important matter, and we strongly urge you to reject this rezoning proposal. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, I didn't mention, please, no clapping. We appreciate, we understand your perspective. If you want to speak, please come to the podium, otherwise, please keep your comments so we can hear and understand all the speakers that are coming up forward. Thank you.
Maybe at some point, we could let all the people who feel a certain way raise their hands or something.
Yeah, we can do that. Once we finish comments, that's a great idea, we'll allow you to show support or opposition, maybe in unison at that point. All right, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, my name's Tim Lightay, and I live at 430 Forest Park Circle in Forest Crossing. I too am a board member of the Forest Crossing Homeowners Association. I realize that property ownership comes with certain rights. The right for the owner of this property to develop the land according to existing zoning classifications is not being questioned. Please, build out this land according to the original specification in the zoning permit, bring in some businesses that will employ people long-term right here. People who will buy lunch at local restaurants and shop at local businesses during their lunch breaks and on their way home, all adding to the tax revenue base for the city, which can be used for our community and maybe pay for some extra lights in our neighborhood. What I don't want to see is some rich developers come in and buy up the property, already zoned as commercial, then put on a show to convince you to spot zone it residential and bring in another 400 cars and 800 people to our neighborhood's front door, all using these incredibly congested surface streets while the rest of us, who bought our homes thinking this little strip of land would be businesses and not apartments, fight our way through the increased traffic. We were here for the developers' explanation of what they want to do. It looks pretty, but they didn't convince me or anyone I know who was there that night that they were going to do something good for our community. Their estimations of the traffic flows were, in my opinion, not based in any reality I've experienced in the five years I've been commuting these streets. And I don't see how they can do anything to mitigate the increased traffic or do anything but make my life worse for this development. Realistically, if I have to pick my son up at More Elementary, I will have to leave 20 to 30 minutes earlier to make it on time to avoid the $1 a minute late charge we get if we get there after 6:00 PM. There's also my concern that if you do rezone this property residential, you won't be able to guarantee that the developers will adhere to the plan they laid out for us. We've already seen it here in Franklin where one development plan is expanded to add more homes so the developers can make more money. They'll say they can't get financing for only 228 units and then bump it to 400 or something, and then they'll get it done because they have property rights. In closing, I have but one question for you. If you lived in Forest Crossing or in any of the nearby neighborhoods that will be grossly affected by this, would you want this apartment complex to be built? Thank you.
My name is Dr. Mark Oliver. My practice is called Franklin Spine and Nerve Clinic. This map doesn't really do justice to what's going on here. I have copies of the actual map, all right? There are several reasons why I'm against this. The first reason, it's going to put me immediately out of business. My practice is located right here in this space in between the nursing center, retirement center, and this proposed unit here. The bulk of the cars in the parking spaces are right here at the entrance, a pool, there's 228 units planned, and they project 400 cars. It's a nightmare trying to get out of here in or, I mean, before or after work, at this present point. South Royal Oaks will never be widened, it will not resolve that problem. Adding 400 cars here is an absolute nightmare. Not only that, but with the pool area being down here and the most of these parking spaces here, it's going to create such a bottleneck that we are, in essence, not just me, but several units out of business in this building. At Royal Oaks right here, no matter if you wait through two or three lights, people disregard that, and they'll move forward trying to inch up to Mack Hatcher, you can't get out. You can't get out now. It's going to be worse with 400 cars. If this goes through, I'm out of business. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying to be nice here. When I say don't clap, please don't clap. I mean, in all honesty, we're trying to listen, and we'll let you give your motion at the end of all these statements, but please wait until then, okay? Thank you.
Freedom of speech.
You're allowed freedom of speech when you come up to the podium and speak to us, sir. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Nelson Williams, I live at 556 St. John Place. My name is Nelson Williams, I live at 556 St. John Place, I live in Forest Crossing. Many people have already stolen some of my thunder, but my problem is infrastructure as far as South Royal Oak transitioning into Mack Hatcher. My understanding is you guys will not be widening South Royal Oak right here. So the traffic, and I'm sorry, but I'm a construction manager and I have built over $500 million worth of construction, and I have problems with the engineer, traffic engineer on record, and her calculations. There are certain things in our business called errors and omissions, and there are a lot of holes in her design, or in their design. My problem is, is that I have lived here since 1999, and when I first moved here, none, Home Depot or none of those stores were there, and it took us seven minutes to get to the Interstate 65. Same drive, today, it takes us 19 minutes. Sure, we've added three traffic lights, we've added Home Depot, all the stores up through there, which are fine, that's part of progress, but trying to add something right in here, which, you know, on first blush, it looks like it could work, but when you know that the traffic doesn't even stop back here, it goes up to about the exit of the post office on most days, you'll know that we are in pain. And it doesn't matter if you add a extra turn lane right there to not have to hit Forest Crossing Boulevard, it's not going to help us. And unless you do the infrastructure work right here at South Royal Oak and make two lanes that turn south, one that goes straight, and then one that takes a right, which means four lanes, which you would have to approve, this development is not going to work. And it's not going to work until Mack Hatcher is fixed as well. So I, we plead that you will not vote this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think you guys have heard pretty much at length about the traffic and the infrastructure, and I think that's probably been better addressed by other folks. I'm a mother, and I'm, got a husband, we just moved here probably in, let's see, October. And my concern is my property value, because I have worked very, very hard to move here, moved from California originally and then worked to get over to Franklin, very excited to live in Franklin. My entire in-law family, my, the husband's parents, his sister, everybody's moved here. And I think what also needs to be considered here is not just the roads, but also the lives of the people you're impacting. And there's a whole neighborhood of people who could tell you their story and how hard they've worked to be where they're at. This is not a neighborhood filled with people that come from money. These are all people that work very hard to pay their mortgage, they work very hard to be in a neighborhood where their kids will go to a good school, they're very happy to pay their taxes for that. And this is a, this is a neighborhood of single-family homes, and we've all worked very hard to live in that neighborhood. And many of us have lived in three stories of people living on top of each other, and we know what that's like, and some of us haven't and are fortunate not to have come from that. But to bring that into this neighborhood where people are working so hard to live in a single-family home and to keep their houses nice and to be able to get to work on time and not fight the traffic to drop kids to daycare and do all the things that we do so we can live there, I think to do that is something, you just need to please also consider the lives of the people you're going to impact and their property value and how hard they've all worked to be there. And I feel sad for these developers, they've probably sunk a lot of money in something that maybe is not going to do anything for them if they can't put three stories of people living on top of each other right there. But let's look at what that neighborhood is and not bring that, turn it into something else. I think that would be beginning of changing that neighborhood for the worse and not for the better. And I would think that as a city, you would want our neighborhoods to be improving and be protecting and guarding that, I would hope.
Okay, ma'am.
My name is Chris Matthews, and I live in Forest Crossing on Forest Park Circle.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Long, I also live in Forest Crossing, I live on Call Pepper Lane. I have lived in Forest Crossing for 20 years, and like most of the people there, and even the businesses are currently along the Royal Oaks, we all moved there with an expectation that this is what life was going to be because it was already zoned. This surprising spot zone really shouldn't be too surprising. I think if this area were really appropriate for this, it would have been zoned this way originally, and it was not. Everybody else has spoken to traffic, I obviously have that concern, I have seen that grow, I have concerns about my house value, I have concerns about even getting into my house. At the earlier meeting on this topic, the developer said, well, there are three entryways, so now I will have to go past the Elks to get to my house. I don't think that is logical, and you shouldn't ask me to do it. The one thing that nobody has talked about here is the buildings themselves. If you look at the buildings, and you will see the proposal, it's six or seven buildings, some of them up to 50,000 square feet, three stories high, four stories on the backside. There is not another building like that within a mile and a half of the area we're talking about. There is certainly not an area where there are six or seven in a row. The only place you'll find that in Franklin is probably at Cool Springs. And ladies and gentlemen, we did not build in Forest Crossing because we wanted to live at Cool Springs. We built there because of what it was, it's what we want, we own property there, we live there. The developers own property there, they have no intention of living there. So my question to you is, who do you represent? Somebody that can come in here and buy a big piece of land, or somebody who came here to live and make this a better community? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Langston, and I live at seven-oh-eight Sugar Tree Lane in Maplewood Subdivision. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to come and speak to you in regard to the proposed rezoning for Rachel Springs. I believe, as do many of our, my own neighbors that live in Maplewood, Forest Crossing, and neighborhoods to the south, will be negatively impacted if this rezoning is approved. There are a lot of comments that have been made, and I may repeat some of them. If I do, I apologize to you for doing that. Traffic has got to be of concern to all of us. It's already a horrendous situation at South Royal Oaks in Mack Hatcher Parkway at the present time. I'm sure many of you have driven this area at rush trap, rush hour traffic in the mornings or in the afternoon, and I don't think the plans that are being looked at right now is going to mitigate that traffic. From Maplewood's point of view, there's also an environmental issue that we'd like to look at. Visual effect is going to, is going, you have a four-story building that's going to be built on a hill, and it's going to be looking down on Maplewood property along Watson Branch Avenue. We think the runoff, the stormwater runoff that will have to be addressed with this much space that will go into parking and roads is going to be another major issue that'll have to be addressed. My final comments in regard to this project is this. The existing zoning has been in place for a number of years. There have been development that's taken place along that parkway, along Royal Oaks, South Royal Oaks, under the existing zoning. We heard a few minutes ago that there had actually been a proposal for use of that land. At our last meeting that we had, neighborhood meetings with the developers, I was, the question was asked, "Have you had any contact under the existing zoning for use of the land?" And the answer was yes, that they had. So, I don't think in any way that this is a taking of property, that anything is arbitrary or capricious in denying this rezoning, and we would ask you humbly to deny this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jane Bryan. I live at twelve-fifty-one Adams Street downtown Franklin. I just wanted to come hoping that you guys would, would consider building the complexes because my husband and I are downsizing, we're empty nesters, and we are looking for up, you know, upscale apartment living because my husband's getting transferred to Nashville to work, and we just want to live, live somewhere closer to the interstate. So, another option was the ones behind the factory. There are also three levels. We looked at those. Those are very pretty. I don't see a lot of traffic going up and down, drive by them all the time, and I, I do shop at Publix and come down Mack Hatcher, I mean, Royal Oaks during five o'clock traffic, and that light stays green for a long time. I mean, I may have to sit there for like maybe two lights. I see people going and turning around. They don't really need to do that because it stays green for so long. So, I just want to have more options. I don't want to have to move closer to Nashville because I love Franklin. I've been here for seventeen years, and we just want an upscale place to live until we can, in the recent or the upcoming years, build our own house. So, I hope you approve it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Elwright, and I live at eight-oh-eight West Main Street in Franklin. I just wanted to address the concerns of property owners that feel like this development may decrease the value of their properties. I don't feel like it will at all. I think we have good examples of that in Cool Springs where we have many apartments there that have not decreased the values of the, the Enclave, Avalon, Cool Springs, all the developments there. So, that, that's an, an issue that I would like to address, and I am in favor of this rezoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. My name is David Kessler. I'm a homeowner for twelve years in the Maplewood Subdivision. I live at six-twenty-four Watson Branch Drive, and I'm here individually, and I feel confident accurately reflect the overwhelming majority of my neighbors in formally expressing our opposition to the rezoning of Rachel Springs. You have heard exactly two proponents for this project. One was the developer, and I believe that proportion is accurately representative of the degree of opposition for this project. I, I believe that it's appropriate to balance the needs of property owners, but I believe that must be balanced with the implications of traffic and quality of life considerations for people who chose to move here for that reason. So, again, on behalf of David Kessler family and Maplewood, we urgently ask you to oppose the rezoning of Rachel Springs, and I did leave my pitchfork and torch at home for this purpose.
We appreciate that.
My name is George Oxman. I'm living the Preserve at Forest Crossings at four-oh-six Chatsworth Court. Our homeowners board has asked me to come speak to you unanimous, through unanimous resolution in opposition to this rezoning of the Rachel Springs development property. We've already heard the traffic. We think that the traffic study, though it may have met the City of Franklin requirements, didn't go far enough. What they showed us at the neighborhood meeting was for one traffic cycle at, at Royal, South Royal Oaks and Mack Hatcher Boulevard. Big problem is that at Forest Crossings Boulevard and, and South Royal Oaks, which is also the entrance to their development, we think it's a horrendous situation now and will only be complicated and worse as a result of four hundred more cars in the development. It, it also compared to something that's not there and didn't take into effect or into account the reality of what's there now. It may get worse if the general office development is, is built out, but that'll be a while, and that, the general office is also five days a week, possibly ten hours a day, where two hundred and twenty-eight apartments is seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. I also don't think that by the site plan they showed us, there's enough room to put a right turn lane off, off of South Royal Oaks onto Mack Hatcher, and it's, it's going to be needed if it does happen. The other thing I want to talk about is the City of Franklin Land Use Plan. This is an award-winning plan, won an award in two thousand and eight, and says for general office zoning that it's there to provide for quality office development, promote, promote economic development, and to protect adjacent residential neighborhoods through additional buffering and landscaping. We don't see that in the proposed development as residential space. The land use plan states that when new development is proposed, it should be evaluated in terms of how it contributes to or detracts from the immediate neighborhood. We believe the architecture involved here for four-story buildings, maximum of four-story buildings, does not fit anywhere in this area, especially south of, of Highway ninety-six, and it, it would be a detraction from the total neighborhoods. The land use plan says protection of neighborhoods is a primary value and that leapfrog land use patterns will be discouraged. Please let's follow the land use plan goals and objectives, I guess. The proposed leapfrog or spot zoning should only be approved, in, in my opinion, and for many of our residents' opinion, for the public good and not for the good of the owner developers. We believe that rezoning this property benefits only the owner developers and not the surrounding neighborhoods. We hope that you'll evaluate the rezoning, rezoning issue on how it contributes to the current neighborhoods, and we don't feel it does and, and encourage you to vote against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Carol Sartan, and I live at six-seven-seven Watson Branch Drive, which is that lot right there. I'm back on the property that's in question, and I think I speak for everybody who shares a property line with this development in asking you to please vote against it from a point, standpoint of privacy, light pollution, and noise pollution. I drove up to the parking lot that's currently there in that lot last, a week or so ago, and just sitting in my car at ground level, I could look down and see into everybody's living rooms, and that's not even from the third-story balcony of an apartment building which they're proposing to put in these, in this spot here. So, the reason that we purchased our home was because it afforded us a great deal of privacy and a place for our kids to just enjoy nature and being outside and that we can be outside in, in a place that feels relatively private for being in the City of Franklin, and the addition of two hundred and twenty-eight apartment buildings, four stories high, will completely obliterate the privacy of every single home along that street. So, we are asking you to please, for the sake of our privacy, vote against this resolution.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Christine Cuomo. I live at four-one-five Maple Grove Drive. I live in Maplewood Subdivision. I'd like to ask a question. I don't know all the intricacies of, of everything that's going on here, but I don't understand the traffic that is going on between ninety-six and Mack Hatcher, and now you want to add to that traffic. You want to add to the insanity that we have to drive through to get out of our subdivision. You can call the police station, find out how many accidents have been right at that section right there getting out, out of my subdivision, and now you want to add more on top of it. And I'd like to know if, if the developers or the people sitting on, over here are, do you live in Maplewood or Forest Crossing? Do you go through that traffic every single day? Are you also subject to that? It's going to get worse. You know, there used to be this cute little groundhog that, at, at Mack Hatcher and Royal Oaks Boulevard, and when the developers came and ripped all the, the old growth trees down and ripped everything down and paved the way for nothing that was there, that animal's no longer there, and, and now you want to do some more ripping apart of the wildlife that's there, and when the heavy rains come, if you're going to build these, these apartment buildings that are going to be looming down upon us, where is all this, this rainwater going to go? There's a stream down there. Where is it going to go? Is it going to go into everybody's backyard? The houses there in Maplewood? Has everything been looked at from that point of view? It, you know, it just really doesn't make sense to me adding this apartment complex on in such a little area, and I don't know if it's a money issue, if it's all about money, or is it all about, you know, the people that live here? That's what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jason Potts, and I live at six-one-five Watson Branch Drive, just above where the line break is right now. You can leave it where it is, though. I am the president of the Maplewood Homeowners Association, and, if I could, flip to that other one if I have to. I'll hold it right here. I want to share with you just so, you're not thinking that this is just a whole bunch of people showing up for the first time. This is what it looked like the first time for the open meeting. Now, with that in mind, ninety-five percent of all of the comments that were taking place are pretty much the same as what you're hearing right now. As far as my Maplewood presidential responsibilities, I'd like to let you know, we have three hundred and eight single-family residential homes. We have over six hundred registered voters in our area, and we are currently in partnership with the Preserve at Forest Crossings and Forest Crossings. What does that represent for you? It represents over one thousand single-family residential homes. It also represents over two thousand registered voters. Now, we have many concerns in Maplewood. You've heard from many of our residents. One of the greatest that we have right now is the proximity of this complex. And if I would, I'll hold this for just a second and share it with everyone. This is a photo that I took actually this afternoon, and if I might hold this. This photo was taken right here in this corner of the property. There's a parking lot here, and I actually took the photo standing right here, and what you're going to be able to see is all of these houses right in this area, all of their living rooms. If it was at night, you could see their TVs. If the kids were in the backyard, you'd be able to see the kids. This apartment complex is going to back up against all of our properties right here on the end, so we have great concern about privacy as well. We honestly believe that with the trails, because I've, I've worked with developer Brent Campbell on the phone before regarding the Greenway walkways, and I have concern with whether they're going to be built in regards to the creek and in regards to the privacy of our current neighborhood right now. Currently, as one of the other representatives said earlier, is this does, there are no more four-story buildings within a mile and a half of these structures. In addition to that, I'd like to go on record and just say this, and I have done, I've personally done business with the investor David Kemp. I have respect for that gentleman, but at the same time, I also respect all of the individuals that I represent here tonight, and I have to say this. If my wife and I were looking for a house for our three children, ten, seven, and four, I will tell you now, we would not have bought in Maplewood had this apartment complex existed. Many, many people feel that their property values are going to go down, and I know for a fact that we would not have bought there. So, in closing, what I'd like to do is this, is I want to ask you, you've seen some of the pictures here, this is at the first story. You can only imagine what four stories is going to look like. I can already tell you, based off of walking through there this afternoon, these four stories that are here are going to be able to see all the way up into the lake. That's one, two, three, almost four, five house, rows of houses listed there. So, please consider that. And as we do this, I know we've had a number of people that have, that have presented this evening, and I think we're almost wrapping up, but just for my own sake, as the president of Maplewood's HOA, those that are opposed to this, would you please stand for a moment? And just for the record, since the cameras can't see that, it looks as though it's got to be at least maybe a half a dozen to a dozen people just trying to squeeze in through the door there.
There are another hundred or more that want to be here, too.
And there's also my wife and many, many other people that want to be here that have their families, their jobs, their other responsibilities in life that cannot be here tonight. I urge you to vote no. I plead with you to vote no. Please do not negatively impact the property values of three hundred and eight homes and the other homes in, in the Preserve at Forest Crossings and in Forest Crossings. Again, over one thousand single-family residential homes. Thank you all. Please be seated.
Hello. My name is Jeanne Morgan. I live at four-fourteen Royal Crossing, and I, my name is Jeanne Morgan. I live at four-fourteen Royal Crossing, and as a member of that community, I think one important thing that has not been pointed out tonight is I know when I come home at night and traffic's backed up, I often will cut down Bedford Way by the daycare center and the bone and joint clinic, or I'll turn down the back way by the Elks Lodge and I'll cut through the Riverview subdivision to get to my home. And if I'm doing that and I live there, with the traffic backed up, I think that that's going to increase tenfold. I mean, it's not going to be just residents that are going to take the back way. It's going to be a lot of people that are going to take that cut through, thinking it's going to cut off some time of them waiting in line to get to Mack Hatcher. We are a single-family subdivision, and we are, got, we have lots of children there, and with this increased traffic going through our subdivision to find routes, you know, that really concerns me, the idea of, of all those children being exposed to that additional traffic. So, as I'm sure many of you, if not all of you, are parents, please take that into consideration as well, and, you know, think about the impact that that will have on the, that part of our community, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ginger Riley. I live at two-eighty-four Rivermont Circle in Forest Crossing, and I am, I ditto pretty much what most of the people have said as far as being in opposition to the zoning variance, but I did want to try to bring up something a little bit different. As you're all aware, the Board of Zoning Appeals has established three standards. That
And with this increased traffic going through our subdivision to find routes, you know, that really concerns me, the idea of all those children being exposed to that additional traffic. So, as I'm sure many of you, if not all of you, are parents, please take that into consideration as well and, you know, think about the impact that that will have on that part of our community, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ginger Riley. I live at 284 Rivermont Circle in Forest Crossing. And I am... I ditto pretty much what most of the people have said as far as being in opposition to the zoning variance, but I did want to try to bring up something a little bit different. As you're all aware, the Board of Zoning Appeals has established three standards that must be met in order for zoning variance to be granted. And having guidelines such as these is very important for any type of government entity to run effectively and consistently. And because they provide clear criteria that must be met before variances are granted, this can help alleviate possible problems of favoritism or any kind of subjective decision-making. And in case you aren't aware, the three standards that must be met, there must be an extraordinary or exceptional situation or condition pertaining strictly to the property considered. Number two, strict application of the ordinance would result in practical difficulties. Two, undue hardship upon the owner of the property. And number three, the relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. In my opinion, the developers, the property owners, have clearly failed in their efforts to meet these three standards. And if I had gotten good answers to those three standards, I may be more optimistic about it, but I do feel they have failed. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Reynolds, and I reside at 623 Bain Drive. And I'm the president of the Henley Homeowners Association. I'm a 35-year resident of Williamson County, most of that in Franklin. My father-in-law, John D. Pinkerton, when he was alive, was a leader in this community, served on the Board of Aldermen, was responsible for the development of this city's parks, and served as the president of its Chamber of Commerce on two different occasions. Franklin is my home. I married a native. I plan on living here until the Lord takes me home. For the past 27 years, I have financed commercial real estate for a living. I've done hundreds and hundreds of projects like this, looked at thousands upon thousands of site plans, currently have at least a half a dozen projects I'm financing just like this, from Baltimore to Atlanta to Charlotte to Fort Lauderdale to Denver to Southern California. And I will tell you that usually I'm on the developer's side of the fence when it comes to these projects. But in my opinion, based on my experience and having looked at, again, thousands upon thousands of site plans just like this, in my opinion, there is no way that, given the current development of the infrastructure, that it can support a development like this without having significant negative impact on the traffic. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Paul Souza. I live at 617 Watson Branch Drive, right next to Jason. I am a board member at large of Maplewood Homeowners Association, and I would just like to make two or three really quick points. First of all, there was a point made about the privacy of being able to be in your home at these three or four rows of houses and having people being able to look in there. But no one has pointed out the fact that the cars that come into this area will be entering and turning and coming into an underground parking area. The headlights from these cars at night are going to be scanning the backs of these houses because this property is... Excuse me, on the crest of a hill. And it will... The cars will be... Their lights will be shining, going right through the yards. It'll be like searchlights at night. Second point I'd like to make is that along the side in the beige right here, there's already high-density housing, if you will. Adding this other high-density housing creates a minor but significant security risk because apartments are apartments. People come, people go. No one's going to be able to keep track of them. My third point is, you've heard about the traffic. I'm not going to talk about traffic, but what I am going to talk about is police and fire access coming down, as you may or may not know, 96 and Mack Hatcher, that's where the fire station is. They're going to have to combat whatever's going on here to make access to whatever's happening at one of these 200-some-odd homes in addition to whatever else could be happening in this area. That's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
JB Smith, I live at 932 Riverview Drive in Forest Crossing. JB Smith, I've lived 932 Riverview Drive, Forest Crossing subdivision. I won't speak much about the traffic, but I'm glad to know that the city's now got the money to solve the problem that we've had for the 10 years that I've lived here. We've been on the mic trying to get something done, and of course, the city doesn't have the money. So, I'm glad to know tonight that you've got it transferred over to take care of the problem that we've suffered with all these years. But another thing, I understood that I read in the paper, it took over $1 million to just improve that little stretch of north of Royal Oaks above 96 going up toward Mallory Lane. And I hesitate to think that $50,000 is going to solve the problem that we'd have with this development here. I don't know where y'all's figures come from. That don't figure with me. And also, I know this county has to build a new school or two every year. What are we going to do with all those kids that come in? Do we have the money in the city to build an extra school? Anybody, I just ask you to use your common sense about this, and let's try to bring in businesses that'll create jobs and create income for the county that pay for some of the things we're already in debt for. But I just ask you to consider this, and I think the current zoning would be the proper one. I'd like to see you stick with it. And thank you for letting us have our say tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then, I'm going to be very, very clear. We have the applicant coming up. We have sat for almost an hour listening to the public comments and appreciate everybody's comments, but please be respectful of the applicant as he speaks as well. We want to hear their side as well as we try to adjudicate this condition coming forth. So, is there someone representing the applicant, please?
Tough act to follow. Thank you. My name's Dwight Kaiser with Kaiser Voguer &amp; Design, and I'm here tonight to represent the project and my client, clients, Mr. Brett Campbell, who is in the audience with us. Also, I'd like to recognize Gillian Fishbach, who's doing our traffic engineering. Preston Quirk is architecture. And my partner Gary Johnson, who also works with us. You probably know everything about this project now from all the people that went through, so I'll try to cut my presentation short so we can get to the business at hand. As you know, we're requesting your concurrence with planning staff's recommendation for approval for the project that's seeking rezoning from general office to residential variety, and we're seeking the approval of the PUD development plan. Franklin's recognized nationwide for its comprehensive and tough development standards. I'm proud to say that this team coordinated the design process, working with the city planning staff, and addressed every technical issue that arose throughout. And to achieve their recommendation is truly something that we're thankful for, and I want to recognize them for assisting us in that regard. Everyone knows where the location is. Little few facts, the site is 25.1 acres in size, land area, and roughly 13 and a half acres, better than half of the site, is actually located north of Watson Branch, which cuts laterally through the site and divides it into north-south. A little bit of the history, and I believe that... You have a plan there? A plan to unify development plan for the office park was approved, I believe Daniel said, back in 2006. It included 12 parcels ranging in size from 1 to 1 and 1/2 acres. The plan indicated 12, roughly 12 two-story office buildings. Thank you. And was estimated at about 120,000 to 130,000 square feet. A three-story product is acceptable. It should be noted within this zoning classification, although two-story was what was proposed or anticipated on the unified development plan. A Phase 1 suburban office building containing 11,500 square feet was constructed at the time. Now, since its opening, the project has struggled at best. It fell in very hard times in 2008 due to the economic crisis, and the property actually went into foreclosure in 2011. My understanding is today that the suburban office building that's built was bought up primarily by investors, and most of those spaces have been leased out. As some people said here tonight, you know, the site is very difficult. Gary and I have studied it over the last 15 years, actually, for several folks, and the physical site constraints and the challenge in topography did not reveal a conventional building approach in any manner. Office development was always kind of the target, and that was based on the current zoning. But its required parking ratio of 4 per 1,000 square feet was just very, very difficult to execute. And I think the Phase 1 building that tried, and it exceeded somewhat, but it has sat there kind of on its own, kind of tells the story that suburban office in this particular location is very, very difficult. Now, in 2012, thank you, Mr. Campbell approached us with the vision of talking about multifamily development, and that's when some ideas started clicking. We knew that a traditional approach, surface parking, surrounding three-story building would not work there, again, because of the site. So, we zeroed in on the idea of a podium-style development. Podium-style being parking underneath at ground level with three stories of apartment built on top. It's an expensive approach, but it does minimize the footprint, the site grading, things of that nature. And given this particular site, it certainly worked. The layout resulted in the creation of what we feel is a pretty nice streetscape that will, we think, enhance this end of South Royal Oaks. It created the opportunity to provide secure parking situation so that people have direct elevator access up to the living units from underneath. We've been able to achieve approximately a 1:1 parking ratio of covered garage space to actual dwelling units. I think we're three units short for the entire development. And that's something that's not readily found in any multifamily apartment communities in the area. I think Jamison Station was one of the last ones that was built that was based on this style of development.
Mr. Chairman, we're having trouble hearing you.
We believe this will appeal to an older, more mature tenant, and that is actually the target market for this project. The amenities will include clubhouse, swimming pool, and things of that nature. Traffic, obviously, traffic is an issue. And as proposed, and it proposes a development with reduced traffic impacts when compared to the currently zoned and anticipated office construction. Gillian would be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding that. You've heard the city staff explain, based on our calculations and using roughly 148,000 square feet of office, that is anticipated to generate daily traffic counts of about 1,804 vehicle trips. The same thing, based on our plan of 228 dwelling units, we're anticipating 1,500, 1,506 to be exact, which is nearly 300 trips different, 300 trips less. The peak hours are always of interest to everybody. The AM peak entering trips into the office development would be 226 vehicles that are actually coming to work there. Compared to multifamily, you know, 23s, no one's really coming into their apartment first thing in the morning. And as expected, the exit counts are reversed. You would have 31 leaving for office, but 92 for residential. 92, most of them probably heading north to the city or to the interstate, things of that nature. The peak hour is where it really gets interesting. PM peak entering trips for the residential are calculated at 93 vehicle trips versus 42 for office. But the key PM movement to understand is the existing trips, in the exiting trips, will have potentially the greatest negative impact on the existing traffic. The residential exiting count is estimated at 50 vehicles compared to the office use of 203. 203 people leaving at the end of the day from work, going north, going south, impacting what we know is an intersection that's having problems. That represents... That's a 400% difference from an apartment use versus the office use. And we think that's a fairly significant, you know, argument in favor of granting the proposed plan, just based on a traffic analysis point of view. So, I'll wrap up and get to questions that you all might have. I'd just close by pointing out that the land use plan does support this type of development. I do want you to know that this rezoning request is not the first to come to this area. In 2001, this body and the city rezoned a tract of land from general office to planned residential community. Today, we call that the Preserve at Forest Crossing. I know there were folks here tonight that were talking about they should not, we should maintain the general office zoning. Well, guess what? That's exactly what it used to be. And I think those are... That's a very nice development. Not to say that those folks are wrong, but we feel that we have met and, in most cases, exceeded the staff's requirements and met every code that's required by the city and by this body and would respectfully request your approval. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Now, Commissioner, as we consider this, this is a recommendation for a zoning change to BOMA. This is not approval or disapproval. It's just what we recommend, approval or disapproval, I guess, to BOMA of the zoning change itself. And we'll consider the PUD development plan as the next item. So, I'll start with a motion. Will we have discussion?
I have a motion. I would like to... This body to recommend disapproval of the rezoning request to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Can it move?
I'm sorry. I said that I would recommend disapproval of the rezoning request to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Okay, it's been moved and segmented. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor of the disapproval recommendation to BOMA, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right.
We're sorry. Wait, should we say...
All right, hold on, hold on.
Wait just a minute. We should say something else. They can still go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman with this even with our recommendation for disapproval. They still have the opportunity to ask the Board of Mayor and Alderman for the rezoning.
And I'll also say, we still have one other item to consider on this item, so let's get to that. Staff, on item number 10, the ordinance to re... I'm sorry, item number 11, resolution approving a development plan for Rachel Springs.
Mr. Chairman, staff has recommended approval of the development plan with conditions. The applicant is proposing 228 multifamily dwelling units on the 25-acre site. The stormwater variance to vary the stream buffer requirements on this site has been granted by the Stormwater Appeals Board at a previous meeting. There are two modifications of standards that have been requested by the applicant with this development plan. The first is a modification of standards for parking. The applicant has requested to modify the ratio from 2.21 spaces per unit to 1.82 spaces per unit. That equates to a city-required parking of 504 spaces, and the applicant is proposing to build 415 parking spaces. Staff has recently performed a local parking study for existing attached residential developments. Based on that study, staff has been planning to bring forward a text amendment for the parking requirements to Planning Commission and the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Since we do have that study at hand, we evaluated this plan with our criteria that we gathered from the study. And based on our staff findings, this proposed parking ratio of 1.82 spaces per unit does seem to be adequate per our study. So, there... And based on our staff findings, this proposed parking ratio of 1.82 spaces per unit does seem to be adequate per our study. So therefore, staff's recommending approval of the modification of standards for parking. The second modification of standards requested is regarding retaining wall height. As you know, the residential maximum for a retaining wall is six feet in height. Here recently, we have had several modifications of standards granted for multifamily residential developments to go by the non-residential retaining wall standards. As we have in the past, we're recommending that that modification of standards be approved. That would basically change the maximum retaining wall height from six feet up to 10 feet for a single wall or to eight-foot staggered walls. Staff recommends approval with conditions.
All right, we're kind of in a unique situation here. I think we've heard most of your comments, but I'm still going to open it up to any other comments someone would have on this item from the audience. You're welcome to come up. Please don't repeat what you said already, but we did hear all that. But if you want to speak again, please come to the front and give us your name, address, and we'll follow the same procedures we did before. And remember, when you put your hands together, it makes a noise, and I'm asking you not to do that.
Hi, once again, my name's Paul Souza. I'm a board member-at-large Maplewood Homeowners Association. I live at 617 Watson Branch Drive. I just want to rebut the two points that were just made. First of all, when they were proposing how little impact that the development was going to make, they pitched it at a certain number of vehicles, and then immediately following, they came up with a greater number of vehicles. At first, they were saying that the impact was going to be minimized because there were only going to be so many vehicles per this development. Now, by changing the ratio, they increased that impact. Secondly, this retaining wall issue. At first, we were told about how little impact this was going to make on the environment. Now they're talking about an eight-foot or 10-foot retaining wall, which in essence is a cliff. If you've ever fallen from eight feet, you know how high that wall is. What's going to happen with erosion at the base of the wall, you name it, water runoff, the things, all the things that were going to impact are more stated because of that. Plus, everyone has talked about looking down from those apartments into Maplewood. Think about looking from Maplewood out your backyard and seeing a hill with an eight- or 10-foot retaining wall and then a giant house on top of that. It'd be like looking at a drive-in theater from ground level. Thank you.
Mike Long, again, from Forest Crossing. One of the topics that came up here was the likelihood that the plan could change even if it were approved here tonight. And I only reference those comments because when the developers spoke, they rested on their laurels for the Preserve at Forest Crossing, which is, in fact, a very nice condo development. But, as I mentioned earlier, I've lived in Forest Crossing for 20 years. When that land first came up for rezoning, there was a large meeting held at the Forest Crossing Clubhouse, maybe some of these people were here, and it was presented to us at that time as standalone individual homes. I don't know where or when that was changed, but that is not what happened. I don't recall that we were ever notified of it, and that is why we are here tonight. It can change, and it can change for the worse. And I don't say that detrimentally to those who live in the condos, they're beautiful.
I forgot to mention something previously that's very important. Could we shift this map just a little bit this way, please? That's fine, thank you. My office is right over there, 10 businesses right in here, 311 Building, which is right across from, my name is Dr. Mark Oliver. Which is right across from the BOMA Joint Center. There's, at present, this is a small little access road, very small. It goes all the way up and down here up to Mack Hatcher. What they are proposing is that all people who want to go to this business, which is now in between the retirement community and their proposed division, subdivision, go through here, go through the apartment complex, the parking area, all these cars backing in and out, not to mention these cars here, plus the underground parking, we're choked off. We're dead. My patients won't tolerate that. They can't get in there. Can you imagine that scenario? Multiply that by two when it's summertime with a pool area and full of people trying to get in here to my building. Not just my building, but the 10 offices that are in that building. It's totally wrong and not thought through. That dotted line that they just kind of put in there represents a real building, represents 10 businesses right now. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Again, for the record, my name's Jason Potts. I'm the president of the Maplewood Homeowners Association. I live at 615 Watson Branch Drive. And I would like to just ask, before this eats up my time, I need to verify, this is the correct slide that shows the walls in question? That's what we want to make sure. The reason why I ask is, and to go back to what Paul's point is, and it's very difficult for everyone to see from the back of the room, and I myself, even when I zoomed in, we had a meeting on Monday, to zoom in and see this information, it looks all great on paper, but I'd like to go back to what Paul said, and that is this, you have all of these homes that are listed right here, they have this beautiful view of trees and creeks and wildlife and everything like that. Now during the fall, and I really wish I had done this, I thought about it today, I said, you know, I think I'm going to go over to Molly Breto's house, whose house actually happens to be right here, and to take a picture going the opposite direction, and to take it the whole length of this development to see what it would look like. And I regret not taking that photo because now it all rings true. If we make these adjustments, even though they probably may be needed, all of our residents are still going to be looking at concrete now when they're looking through there. If they come back and they're in their backyards, because of the elevation, it's a very, very steep incline, they will not be able to see anything except for concrete. And these four-story buildings, and they are four-story, I know the developer, development team continues to say that they're three, but we will see four. The basement or this underground parking, that counts as a level for us. So as we're looking at these retaining walls and these other adjustments, I again plead with you to please vote no and disregard for Rachel Springs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Brent Campbell. I live at 404 Whistler Cove in Franklin, along with Dr. David Kemp, where the applicants were for you tonight. And I'd just like to say, address a few of the concerns that have been expressed here. Most recently, the issue of the privacy. Is this the point?
This is just a pen.
Where's the point?
Are you four against the proposition?
From right here to here is about 276 state communities parking lot. From this area right through here to these houses up in here, it's approximately 406 feet. Also, you know, what we've tried to do, we've done a lot of research in the demographics of Franklin, and we are interested in building a very senior-friendly community. When we looked and did our traffic analysis and access, the glaring feature to me is that we use the right-hand lane of South Royal Oaks for homebound traffic, and quite frankly, there's substantially less of a stacking issue on that. And I've made several dozen loops around at various times of the day, and it's just getting access has not been an issue. That being said, I hear this community loud and clear. And what I'm proposing right now is to defer this matter. We're going to go back to the drawing boards, we're going to look at the concept that we've come up with, we're going to look at the unit counts that we have, we're going to try to sit down with the community and find some common ground and what we can do with the property, and bring this back before you at a different date. So, at this time, and I do, I am very sensitive to the community, and, you know, and there is a traffic issue, so we want to sit down with the community, see if we can find some common ground, and then come back at a later date. Thank you.
All right, well, I will entertain whatever motion the commission so chooses.
Would it be proper to have deferral, or he wants withdrawal, is what I think the word you used? I don't want good words in his mouth.
You know, I asked for deferral.
Yeah, but if you're going to defer, you're going to need to a date certain. I don't know how long.
How long of a deferral are you looking for?
You know, 60 days at least.
Two months.
I mean, we need time to go back and redraw and reevaluate our development plan and look at our various options. And I also need plan to sit down with the community to get their input.
So would that be the April meeting? What you're asking for?
I hope we could accommodate it by then. I'm not sure that we could, but I would, if that is not realistic at the end of March, I'd well inform staff to defer it another month.
Okay, all right. You want to do that motion?
To be honest with you, I have a problem with the deferral, but with as much as we've heard tonight, probably six months. I mean, if I'm going to, if I would propose a deferral, I, there's a lot, I think, and I'm very thankful for you doing this, but I don't think three months is going to be enough, in my opinion. So I would offer the motion that we defer this, well, I guess that we defer this item for six months, to give staff and the developer and the community time to sit down and to come up with an alternative plan.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved to second, end discussion.
I have a question. Doesn't the development plan follow the rezoning?
It would.
Wouldn't this be, since we've already voted to disapprove the rezoning, why would we defer in this for, what is that going to do?
The applicant has the right to also ask for a deferral at the Board, at Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Right, right. Because it's going to go to BOMA. So what, does this document do at this point, the development plan, since we didn't agree?
Well, they could, I mean, you don't go to BOMA.
We can go ahead and refer this on to BOMA as.
Well, we don't, no, we don't send this to BOMA, this is voted by us. We'll send the.
Well, it says favorable recommendation to BOMA. It goes, it goes.
It goes to BOMA.
If they desire, if it's, if the rezoning request is recommended for approval, it automatically goes. If it's recommended for disapproval, then the applicant has the opportunity.
So he still has control.
Right, that was my question.
Mr. Chairman, can I make comment?
Yes, please.
I know the applicant has spent a lot of money preparing this project, and that money should be used, obviously, to go back and study what the current use is there and allow the applicant to reallocate those funds to the current use. As opposed, if we turn it down, they've spent that money, which is, they run the risk, obviously, but I think for the benefit of research and the money spent, then maybe they can get together with the neighbors and figure out what's in the best interest as far as businesses and what the current zoning allows, and the sensitivity to the neighbors and particularly in Maplewood. I see more than four stories out there. By the time we get through grading and putting retaining walls up and pushing that back down in there, it could be six stories. So there's a lot of profiles that need to be studied, and I think the commercial aspect of it, the businesses and what they were approved for, all the state, all the remain, that it would be good for a compromise, I think, to give them the opportunity to defer this for six months and let them reapply.
Can I interject that, you know, we've already been looking, I mean, obviously, when we got wind of the degree of opposition, I actually came in here expecting tonight to defer, ask for deferment for the zoning request and the PUD plan as well. We have some options in the topography of this property and how we work with it. We had looked and, I've been planning this for six months, or actually, I've been planning this since, for almost a year now. And in that year, the real estate market has come back considerably in Franklin, both for commercial and for residential, and in particular, the condominium market has not come back. And we had looked at doing a considerable reduction in unit count and coming in with a condominium product versus an apartment rental, which is one of the, one of the things that we want to take the time to study and look at. That would still require residential variety zoning. But the impact that we're talking about would, the unit count, would be far, far less than what we're seeking tonight.
Okay, all right. Any other comments on the motion to defer for six months? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, before you leave, thanks for your time, thanks for your comments. Please leave in an orderly, quiet way because we've got more agenda to go over, so thank you. Downs Boulevard, property subdivision site plan lot 15, a 16,009 acre per acre, square foot, commercial, structure. Nope, sorry. Thank you.
Geez, oh my.
Anyways, what I meant to say, item 19, ledge lawn subdivision. No, I'm still wrong.
Stream Valley.
PUD subdivision. Staff, go ahead, take me out of this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry that so many people don't want to go out garage doors, but.
John Haas, representing the Stream Valley PUD subdivision, requests a waiver from section 5.3.5 to the 1A of the zoning ordinance, which limits garage door width to nine feet on all facades. The applicant requests a modification of design standards to allow wider garage doors on the side and rear facades of single-family houses in the Stream Valley PUD subdivision. The applicant argues that, one, the rule regarding garage door width was not in place at the time that the concept plan was approved. Two, wider garage doors have been approved and built on the already existing portion of the Stream Valley development. And three, employing the newer standard will result in the enlargement of lots, thus reducing the amount of open space in the development. The planning department agrees with the applicant that the rule was not in place at the time the concept plan was approved. Stream Valley was approved in 2005, and the current standard went into effect in 2010. We would note, however, that on matters of design that do not affect standard entitlements such as unit count, ingress egress, and road networks, we generally apply our current standards to all projects regardless of approval date. The planning department also agrees that several existing houses at Stream Valley include double-width garage doors. However, at least one other development in Franklin, McKay's Mill, includes a mixture of garage door widths. With regard to the effects on open space, we are uncertain whether limiting garage door width would lead to a reduction in this development's designated open space. We would note that the amount of open space designated in the concept plan exceeds the minimum requirement outlined in the zoning ordinance. Additionally, minor alterations to open space may be approved administratively. Thus, Stream Valley does have some flexibility should adjustments to open space become necessary. Thus, Stream Valley does have some flexibility should adjustments to open space become necessary. We do not necessarily disagree with the applicant's arguments. Further, we are not opposed to the request. We have opted to present this request without a recommendation to you this evening, because this issue does affect multiple projects in the city of Franklin, and we are uncertain whether the will of the commission is to consider these projects on a case-by-case basis or to reconsider this particular aspect of the zoning ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this item other than the applicant? Nobody is in the garages. All right, is there someone representing the applicant?
Brian Echols, representing the applicant. John Haas is here as well, who's a landscape architect and largely responsible for design and aesthetics in this development. Let me be, let me hasten to add that we are now asking you to apply this rule to the entire city of Franklin and staff, indicating we don't want this to be a citywide referendum on the size of doors for garages. We would just like you to look at Stream Valley in itself. As staff noted, Stream Valley was a very well-designed, high-standard of design. I think you look at the concept plan and the pattern book, it was very particular with respect to the items of design. One of the things they had long before, it was a requirement in the city of Franklin, it was an absolute prohibition, for example, on double garage doors in the front, at any step back at any time. It did not, however, address, the pattern book did not address the issue of double doors on the rear and the sides, because it was not prohibited at the time. There was no reason to have addressed that. With respect to that, let me be clear that we are not asking any relief from the pattern book itself with respect to front-loaded garages. Those are required to comply with the existing standards, and the standards of the pattern book in itself require two separate doors, or however many doors there may be. What we are asking is basically that the intent, the design of the Stream Valley subdivision continue to follow through the way it was intended. And I should note that with respect to the issue of double garage doors, I'm fully aware of and sympathetic to the desire to not have a sea of double doors as you go down a street, to make that the dominant architectural feature. With respect to double doors on the rear and the side, though, is an entirely different aesthetic that's involved, and it's a functional issue as well, just because of turning movements, which are greater with smaller doors than with double doors, which allow a little more freedom for a three-point turn. There are many developments of a high caliber in Franklin that have this feature in the rear. I was out at West Haven the other day. Even the sections being built today in their alley-loaded product are double doors. I don't think anybody would, I know, the chairman, I shouldn't say this, nobody would say that West Haven is poorly designed as far as its architecture. I think, and I think you could look at Willows Springs, I think you look at Ashton Park, it's not unusual to have that feature in the rear or the side. And so we're simply asking you tonight to permit the developer to have the modification of standards, to basically go back to where we were before, a high-caliber, high-quality subdivision, but one that continued the design element it originally had. And we're happy to entertain any questions.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Set.
Move to second, any discussion? Ms. Peterson?
First of all, that design standard for no double doors was completed before 2007, when I came on to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. So it's been in existence for a number of years.
I think the element that changed in 2007, as staff alluded to, was the absolute prohibition on anything more than nine-foot doors anywhere in a development.
That was, I believe that was before 2007, because, as I say, it was before I came on the planning commission. I think that there was a reason for that. As I say, it preceded my service on the, as an Alderman. I guess the part of it that I am concerned about is that it is not strictly an entitlement, as was mentioned before, on the key parts, the density, and I'm sorry, I forgot the other things that you said.
Ingress egress, road network, open space.
Thank you, thank you, yes. All of those things, I think we, everyone would agree, does follow with any approval that did not expire. However, I think the general rule has been if, if it was not one of those entitlements, then developments were expected to follow the rules that are existence whenever they, whenever the development is approved. So I cannot support this for that reason. As I say, I think, I think there are certain entitlements that do, you know, continue with a development approval as long as the approval is not one that expires. But otherwise, I think we really run into a lot of problems. I'm thinking of things much more serious than the size of a garage door. But I do not want to go down that path, that we are saying anything, any development, any project could just be required to follow the rules that were in place whenever they were originally approved, unless it is for some of those specifics that have already been named here.
Yeah, I wanna clear, one second, I wanna clarify, because I don't think I understood this before. This nine-foot, or larger than nine-foot request is purely side doors and rear garage doors. It's not front loaded.
That's correct. They have, they submitted a page, the two relevant pages of their pattern book, and they made a note in that they specifically address only side and rear garage doors.
I say that because I think in the garage discussion that we've had in the past, most of those concerns, why the nine-foot was created, was because it was a visual issue, what you could see from the street. So I'm a little surprised that it is in the regulations that it's side and rear garage doors, because.
If you look at that, it is very specific in our new zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
I mean, not necessarily that I couldn't live without it.
I'm with you, Ms. Peterson, that slippery slopes concern me.
That's right. That's my concern.
But I think in this case, I could support this, but I understand your perspective. Alma?
I was gonna say, I'm gonna support this modification of standards as well, because it is side and rear, and most of the time, we were really, really talking about the front-loaded garages and really stressing those, and they're already in the development, and it's a nice development, and they went there from the beginning, so I think it's, you know, it makes sense to allow them to have them throughout the remainder of the development, especially since it's front and rear.
Well, kinda along with Mike and Ann or something, you said you really aren't proposing for citywide, but common sense to me says.
That's right.
That if it makes sense here, side, because it was visual as far as I was concerned, because I think I may have been on the board when that one.
That's right.
You can't see side and back, why not? I mean, because otherwise, if I were a developer, and that is something that's desirable for a homeowner, at least it would be for me, we'll be doing this a lot, I would think. So why not consider that if it is side and rear? Because if I'm not mistaken, that was the force that was behind the whole garage issue anyways, because you could drive down the street and see it. So, you know, that's something I think we might wanna look at. So we won't have to be in here granting modifications to the standard.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know that our design professionals group has asked that we look at this particular issue as well.
Okay.
Actually, there is one plan currently that has been submitted for the next month's planning commission agenda that also has this same request.
Okay.
And just to add to that, there are two other plans that are being held out because of a condition that we placed on regarding garage doors as well.
Should've told us that at first.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments?
Well, okay, on a side, does that mean that if you have one facing the street, it would have to go with the?
Correct, that's a food.
Yes. Right. Let me say to you, if you look back and see what that zoning ordinance says about those, it's not just the width of it, it's the little decorative stuff that goes with it and everything, which is not, is not necessarily one of the strong points of the current zoning ordinance, in my opinion. But still, my concern is, though, that it's not just talking about garage doors, even though unfortunately, we hear that there are several coming up now. But it is the idea that a development that comes in with a part that has not been approved, and that it has to be approved under the regulations as they existed when they were first proposed, that is my real concern. And I feel very strongly about that. I do not want to see an erosion or the slippery slope on many other things that may be much more important than garage doors.
Which I think, further, should we, should we then consider, because I don't know what this would do as far as the developer, should we not vote on this and consider actually making this specific change, not for the decor, but this specific change where we are not going down a slippery slope, where that is then the policy, that is then what is in our current ordinance? Because for me, that does take it away, because if it makes sense, and I think it does to most of us, we would do that, and then it wasn't, it wouldn't be like we were going down a slippery slope. The slope would then be rugged.
I appreciate your.
Do you have a motion?
I appreciate your comment.
Yeah, we do see a motion.
We have a motion.
We do have a motion.
Ms. President, Roger.
What's the limitation on a front-loaded garage door then?
Ten feet.
Nine feet with a two-foot separation. What's interesting is that that two-foot separation is only called for on front-loading garages. The zoning ordinance is not specific on side and rear garages as to how much space there should be between individual doors.
But it's a total of nine feet with a separation.
Nine feet per door. Right.
Okay. And we'll just say your two nine-foot doors have been melded together, just happened to open at the same time.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
No.
Okay, Ms. Peterson?
And if I'm quick comment, and the no is not, it's not for this, it's because I think we need to look at this, and I don't wanna, I'm not gonna, I don't want to be a party to a slippery slope, I wanna make the slope rugged.
No, no, let us seriously, even though I know that's very minor in all the things that we're trying to do, but I would appreciate that, that was a good comment, and I thank you for it.
Thank you. All right, we're on item 21. Public hearing, amend chapter six certifications of the subdivision regulations of Franklin, Tennessee. So is this where I say the public hearing is open? All right, ladies and gentlemen, who remain, the public hearing is open. Please come forward if you have any comments. And the ghost of Elvis has showed up at the podium. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. All right, any, anything else on that item?
We're severing the approval of the amendments that are housekeeping in chapter six of the subdivision regulations.
Okay, do we vote on that?
The public hearing is required by state law to amend the subrare, so you have to hold the public hearing, and now you can vote on that.
I got you, okay.
I move that we amend our subdivision regulations.
Staff, do you wanna go through those? No?
Mr. Chairman, basically, as Micah has indicated, these are housekeeping issues. We are changing, we are getting into the 21st century instead of the 19th century, and, you know, that, that's kind of a good thing. We have changed the titles to reflect the current titles of people who are signing subdivision regulations and subdivision plans. And we have changed the name of performance to Agreement Insurities, which is the title we use currently. Really, we are just bringing it up to date with the, both the years that we're currently using and the nomenclature that we're currently using.
Okay. Very good.
So now, it's my.
You didn't add chickens are allowed in the backyards?
We didn't even sneak it in there.
All right, good.
Beehugs.
Yeah, that's right. All right, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the subdivision regulations.
Okay, Ms. Peterson moved, seconded by Roger. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. The ayes have it. Any other non-agenda items? None? Any other business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to request some iPads for the use of, replace these packages.
This is ridiculous.
Okay.
I second that, this is ridiculous.
Let me tell you, think about looking at this on an iPad, though. If you had one of their monitors, that's one thing, but looking at this on an iPad, I appreciate your, you should've seen me the other night, I had.
You know, every, we're all on, we're all on, you know, internet and the digital files at the office, and, I mean, we're paperless narrowly, and when are we gonna go paperless around here?
As I say, I don't wanna look at this on an iPad.
I'll take in.
I can barely read it with a magnifying glass now.
Give me those, I'll take mine in.
But I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Move for adjourned.
Move for adjourned, is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.